Call to order, the City of Oconomowoc Committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, October 5th, 2021. Has appropriate meeting notification been made?
Yes, Your Honor, it has.
Thank you very much. Would you call roll, please?
Alderman Kavieski.
Here.
Alderman Douglas.
Here.
Alderman Rozak.
Here.
Alderman Zaffel.
Here.
Alderman Ellis.
I'm here.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
Here.
Alderman Mulder.
Here.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Here.
Great, thank you very much. We're going to move on to committee business, presentation, discussion of dispatch staffing update. Mr. Poznick.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here just to give you an update on the dispatch staffing, our current status. At your desk is a memo from Chief Fister and an email from WCC for you to reference as I'm speaking tonight. So, a few weeks ago, we became aware that two of our full-time dispatchers were worried about their jobs and seriously looking for other employment. Both dispatchers were long-term, longtime dispatchers vested and had no plans to leave. One of the dispatchers recently received an expedited job offer and resigned September 24th. The second dispatcher also received a job offer and will be leaving October 15th. Both dispatchers made it clear they had no intentions of leaving. They loved Oconomowoc and loved dispatching for Oconomowoc, but needed to do what was best for their families. We have a third dispatcher who has a job offer, but is in good position to delay her acceptance as she awaits for council action on the dispatch center. It's a similar situation. She prefers to stay, but can, she's fortunately able to hold on. We lost a fourth dispatcher in May, same situation, concerned about not having a job and would have also wanted to stay, but needed to do what was best for her. So, in summary, by the middle of October, we lost three dispatchers and have one pending the result of council action. Something for all you to know, prior to the council conversation on closing dispatch, our dispatch center had the best turnover an employer could ever have, and that was zero percent, and that was with our full time. What we are doing now to cover dispatch, just so you're aware, we replaced the dispatcher who left in May with a new hire who is currently going through training. As of current, he's doing well with training, and we expect this dispatcher to be trained by the end of the year. To cover vacant shifts, we promoted a part-time dispatcher to a full-time LTE position to start October 14th. In addition, we have asked our part-time staff to work additional hours, which they are doing. In summary, we have full, three time, full-time, three full-time dispatchers working, one in training and one vacant position, and all this is in Chief Fister's memo that you can reference. So, our current concerns, we are stretched thin, and we would struggle to keep 24-hour dispatching if another dispatcher was to leave due to a major absence, sick, FMLA, COVID, whatever. Chief Fister, the mayor, Mark Frye, and I reviewed our emergency staffing options if a dispatch vacancy was to occur. Chief informed us that if we had a staffing vacancy, we would need to use our backup, which would be WCC, to cover dispatch if needed. Our backup sent us an email end of September. Chief received a high-important email from WCC, which is also in your packet that I gave you, informing the police departments of WCC that there's staffing problems and to tell you about their staffing issues and their negative effects on their operations. In summary, per the email, WCC is understaffed by 18 dispatchers, which is forcing them to streamline services. So, it's not the best backup right now for us, given that they are short too. Per email, WCC says they're working to fill their vacancies and have some plans going forward. Giving our, given the email, our police department will do their best to keep operations going and hopefully doesn't have to rely on WCC while WC is going through their staffing issues. So, going forward, please rest assured at no time, and I spoke to the chief on this, and he guaranteed me this, we will put the safety of our officers and community at risk. The good news is, we are and have been able to cover all of our dispatch shifts, and we feel we have a good plan in place. The purpose of me updating you tonight is just to keep you informed of the staffing issues, what's going on at the city, and also at WCC. Although the reasons for being short-staffed are totally different, we wanted you to be aware of both. So, with that, that's pretty much all I had for you tonight. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. Go ahead.
So, we know what the staffing issues are here, sadly. It's, I'm sorry, but it's sad. Do we know specifically what some of the vacancies at WCC or turnover there are caused by?
They have it listed in that email.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Yeah. And they do have a plan in place. I think they got, they got six in training, and they have another six on par to come through, hopefully. So...
Tony?
Sure.
Are we, if WCC having issues, are we able to look at other dispatch centers such as like Milwaukee County, Bayside, or other communities that have dispatch that could provide backup to us?
I don't believe so. I don't know if, Fister, could you confirm? Is that true? No.
Hold on here, though. I was just at WCC today talking to Gary Bell, and he said they were fully able to take on any workload we bring over to them. Had no question about it. So, I just think we need to-
That's not, okay, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
You're saying that they're not able to provide support, that they probably can't do it.
They are, if you read that email, they are patching services, they are combining services.
Well, I just got the email like two seconds ago before I sat down, so I wouldn't have had time to read it.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
I think, I think what's also really important, since we're live streaming, please, everybody, make sure you're speaking into your microphone so that everyone can hear. Thank you.
My question is, in reference to streamlining, what do they mean by streamlining?
They give you a couple examples in their email. Their combining services, their patching services. I have to get Chief Fister to speak on what that means by patching, but I believe they're combining services.
I would like, I'd like to know what streamlining means.
But I think when we come up with some questions, we have to be fair to WCC-
True.
-and let them answer the question. So, I think if you-
No, I understand that, but I just, I, if I'm going to have to make a decision here, I want to make sure that my, my, my questions are answered.
I agree. And so, one of the things moving forward, whether it has to do with questions for a police department, Matrix, or WCC, we need to put all those together, send those all after this meeting. You'll have an open forum today to ask questions, but we also want to be respectful because not everyone's here tonight. So, those can go to Mark Frye. Mark Frye can get the answers and then give the answers to everyone together. That way, we're consolidating it so everybody's getting the same message.
Right. And WCC is not saying in this email that they can't take us on, just so you get clear about that. They're not saying that. They are just saying they're short-staffed.
It just means they're going to have to patch, which means they're going, the channels are going to have more communities on them, and there's going to be more saturation within those, and that can be a dangerous situation.
And I want to, I want to be, I want to be clear that the reason we're giving this information is that we have to all learn more. So, I want to make sure we're not all jumping to one conclusion or the other. And you have the information, and so you're going to have a ton of questions that our police department's going to have to answer as well as WCC. But if you have it in your head and you know that there are issues, I think that can also help maybe foster some questions to Matrix, which is the main reason for this discussion tonight. Alderman Rozak.
Yeah, Chief Fister, I appreciate your update. I was aware of some of those retirements and resignations. A couple real quick points. I don't, in this email, I don't see anywhere where they say the word "streamlining," but I see that they're doing some patching. And currently, WCC says they've got six full-time equivalents that are in their third week of job training and six more that they hope to onboard by January 13th, 2022. To Alderman Shellpepper's point, I did a ride-along at WCC. I don't know how many other Aldermen have done that, but I sat there for two and a half hours like I did with our dispatch. And while I was there two weeks ago, our dispatch went down for two days. I was actually sitting there when our dispatch went down and 911 calls were not coming in. WCC and the pod literally next to me handle all of our 911 traffic. So, non-emergency calls were still coming through, but the 911 calls were being handled and transferred to our non-emergency number here in the city. So, at least from the, just my perspective, sitting there seeing our, and I think our 911 went down because of something not related. It was an AT&amp;T outage or something. It had nothing to do with like the service or anything like that. It was just-
Can I, can I just jump in for a second? So, one of the things we're trying to do is get you information so we can do more investigation, because we're not voting on anything.
Yeah.
So, when we start to go to examples, I think that's understandable we want to go there.
I don't, I don't need to comment more on it.
People, people have to be able to defend themselves to do it. Chief, I'm going to give you one shot to make a comment with regard to being down for two days, but our goal tonight is to get all the information from Matrix. So, we really don't want to go in too many avenues, because in our next meeting, we'll have, have, you'll have many, ample, and plenty of time to ask the OPD questions as well as WCC questions. So, I just want to be careful as we move forward, we get the information out to you. Chief.
I'm actually not going to make a response to that right now, because it's going to take way too long, and we need to get Matrix up here, but I will defend that at the appropriate time. There is reasons, and there is things in place for that. I will, however, say something else here tonight, that you can read an email and a memo and look at, we got six, we got this, we got that, but did they tell you that probably three of them are going to be failing out? Did they tell you that, you know, their turnover rate when they hire stuff? Yeah.
Well, okay, I, I, I think we need, we need-
That is my comment.
Okay. I've got the comments on both sides. Let's move forward. Anything else for Mr. Poznick?
And just one point I just wanted to make. I think it's best that you guys have that email, so you can ask WCC those questions, and that was our intentions in giving it to you. I think it's best that you guys know what was sent to us on behalf of their staffing levels. It'll make you more educated, so...
So, at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Matrix, and if you, would love to have you do your presentation for us. We really appreciate for all the work that you've done for the city. And then, at the end of the presentation, if you'll know, we also have remote access on your computer screen, Alderman, and then we'll leave it open for questions and answers at that point.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for having us here today to talk about our study and our report and our findings related to Oconomowoc Dispatch. I'm going to pull it up here. All right, great. And we're not seeing Greg and Stu, but Greg and Stu, can you both hear us?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Who can?
Okay, great. Okay, and they appear right there. Wonderful. My name's David Branch, and I've been the project coordinator-
If you can talk more into the microphone, please. I want to make sure we get the audio. Sorry about that.
That's fine. I've been the project coordinator and the lead analyst on this study, and I'm joined by Greg Matthews, who's been our project manager and directing our analysis on this study, as well as Stu Cronin, who's our technical analyst and has looked at radio and technology consolidation feasibility aspects related to this study. They can speak more knowledgeably than I can about certain parts of this, so I'll hand it over to them at those appropriate times, but considering that a month ago, I was the one cutting in and out, I figured it'd be better for me to be here in person. This study, as you know, the purpose of it was to evaluate the Oconomowoc Dispatch Center and the feasibility of consolidation with Waukesha County Communications, WCC. Consolidation is a trend that has emerged in the last two decades. It's mostly driven by technology, the desire to capitalize on technology that enhances performance and enhances interoperability between agencies, as well as the desire to realize cost savings. And that's true in many states that have put mandates in place or incentives in place. The state of Wisconsin, for example, has a statute that grants can be administered to public safety answering points or PSAPS if they meet certain criteria that make it clear the preference is a single dispatch center in each county. So, that's kind of the, the context behind the study and why this is such a salient issue for the town, as well as for many communities across the country.
For the city.
Excuse me, for the city. Thank you. As far as the methodology of our study, we began in June. We visited here and conducted in-person meetings with the department leadership, administrative and IT support staff, as well as with dispatchers at Oconomowoc Dispatch, and did the same thing over at WCC with their leadership, their supervisors, dispatchers at their center. We also spent time on the dispatch floor, observing dispatchers as they operated, watching them, you know, handle radio traffic, answer phone calls, getting, asking them questions, getting a sense of what their operations look like in context and as they use their technology. The chief and the captain here were both very helpful, and all the dispatchers were as well, and we spoke with them individually, and they were very forthcoming and cooperative and helped a lot. We also collected data from each center, and that was an ongoing effort. Budget, organization, and staffing data, the use of technology, training and quality assurance programs, the workload that each center deals with. We talked also with department leadership for some of WCC's current customers for 12 different agencies that they currently serve, and asked them about their experience as customers with WCC, some of the issues that were raised when we were here on-site, and got a sense of, of their perspective on those. And we maintained ongoing correspondence with both Oconomowoc police leadership, as well as WCC, WCC's leadership throughout the course of the study. We created some interim deliverables, which we presented to staff, one being the current state assessment, and the other being the world-class dispatch or best-in-class dispatch document that we presented to you about a month ago. Our framework for looking at dispatch consolidation and the feasibility of it is based on what we call four framing elements, and I'm going to ask Greg to hop in here and introduce those, as well as the first portion of our analysis.
Thank you, David. Good evening, Alderman. Thank you very much for allowing Stu and I to present to you remotely. This is an important slide for us in most of our slide presentations regarding dispatch, and it's at the beginning for a particular reason. Whenever we do a dispatch study at Matrix Consulting, whether it's a feasibility study, an operation study, a consolidation study, anything related to 911, we have these four framing elements that underpin, if you will, our analysis and assessment. And we believe each of one of these four framing elements are important in dispatch analysis, and we actually invite our clients to utilize these four framing elements, if you will, to help your own decision-making as you move forward. So, what are these four framing elements? Framing element number one, it's crucial to minimize delays in response time for effective service delivery to the community. Essentially, what we're suggesting to you here is that the faster you can deploy public safety resources, the better the customer service that is received by your community. There's a number of studies that have been done throughout the nation as it relates to the faster you get there, the better off you are. That can be related to flashover in fires. That can be related to survival rate in heart attacks. That can be related to apprehending a criminal in a crime in progress call. So, that's framing element number one, minimizing delays to get your public safety resources outbound. Framing element number two, highly-trained dispatchers that are professionals should be employed on a consistent basis, and they should use consistent protocols. As you might imagine, given there are all kinds of dispatch agencies throughout the United States, not all dispatch agencies have professional dispatchers. Some have sheriff's deputies dispatching. Some have fire department staff dispatching. Some have police officers dispatching just by the nature of their operation. We believe it's critical to have highly-trained professional job-classified dispatchers in the profession, and of course, there's a broad spectrum on how well these professional dispatchers are trained, but nevertheless, a professional dispatcher is key. Framing element number three, we believe in a cost-effective operation at the highest level of service. We believe the taxpayers deserve that highly-effective service at the most reasonable cost. So, we believe that the fiscal element of this comes into play. And then finally, framing element number four, some would call this a bit more subjective than the analytically-based framing elements in one through three, but we believe that operational changes that are performed at a dispatch operation should ultimately have a net benefit to public safety. That means that whether you have a negative change or a positive change as a consequence of an implementation strategy, overall, it should benefit your public safety in your community and ultimately in your region. So, those are the four framing elements that are always the baseline. Next slide, please, David. So, with respect to call-taking and dispatch performance, this is directly linked to the first framing element about rapid, rapidity of response. These are some key performance indicators. They're talked about in some detail in the report, but it's important to note for you that both OPD and WCC outperform the national benchmarks with respect to the speed in which they answer telephone calls, the 911 calls. The metrics are there for you. You can see that there's a 15%, there's a 15-second response rate and a 20-second response rate with the respective standards, and you can see that both OPD and WCC are exceptional at answering the telephone in those periods of times. There is another key performance metric as it relates to dispatch processing times for high-priority calls. NFPA generally suggests that all high-priority calls should be dispatched within 60 seconds. What is a high-priority call? A structured fire, a baby not breathing, a, a, a crime in progress that's a person's crime, if you will. So, what they suggest, 90% within 60 seconds. What we discovered in our analysis, if both agencies are achieving that, they're at the eye of the eye. The 61% number was analytically derived at, but the bottom line is, there's an equivalency between the two agencies as it relates to that particular performance metric. What's important to note here, though, is with respect to these key performance metrics, they are not specifically applicable in about half the time, and that is because calls are being transferred between the two agencies. 56% of the 911 calls received at OPD are transferred from WCC. So, consequently, the metric up above about response time, 15 seconds, 20 seconds, et cetera, is somewhat immaterial for after calls, because it needs to be transferred. So, as it relates to response time, getting those resources out quickly, this is a key issue area that you'll hear throughout this presentation and that you'll see in the report. That dual PSAP system, which requires transfers, is undoubtedly problematic. Next slide, David.
Thanks, Greg. Want to talk about the staffing implications at each center. At Oconomowoc, the single dispatcher on duty is sufficient to handle the center's dispatch workload in almost all cases. In the report, you can see the analysis we did of their occupancy rate based on emergency communications workload, that being 911 calls and dispatching activity in CAD events. And it does not really come close to reaching what would be a problematic occupancy rate. So, there, there's not a huge volume of workload coming into the Oconomowoc Dispatch Center that is high-priority emergency workload. And given the population projections in the city's comprehensive plan, the 2050 plan, it looks like that's likely to remain the case for the foreseeable future. There would have to be a dramatic surge in emergency workload that seems like it's unlikely to occur, given, given those. So, what we've assumed is that going forward, Oconomowoc would continue to have one dispatcher on duty at all times, because the emergency workload wouldn't be enough to justify having a second dispatcher. This is not ideal, because the NFPA recommends that two dispatchers should be on duty at all times. The state of Wisconsin has that as one of these criteria for their, the grant funding that they administer. Two dispatchers are preferable, because they can back each other up. They can give each other a chance to take breaks. In the case of a really severe incident, one of them can handle the glut of phone calls that's coming in while the other mans the radios, or one of them can do, handle a secondary radio channel while the, the other one handles the first radio channel. If you've only got one dispatcher on duty, you don't have that option, and the one dispatcher has to handle all of it. That's not ideal. Given the small volume of emergency communications workload in Oconomowoc, it's not a huge pressing issue, but it is a small percentage vulnerability. WCC, on the other hand, has its own staffing issues, as we just heard a few minutes ago. They do have multiple call-takers and dispatchers on duty, which means that if a big event happens, they have the ability to flex their resources, and they can patch together two channels over here so that one dispatcher can focus on this event in progress, or the supervisor on duty can come and take extra 911 calls that are coming in. However, they've also got a very high staff turnover rate. What was just announced is higher than it was when we completed the analysis on this particular facet a couple weeks back. But the high turnover rate is an issue, not because it means they can't take the 911 calls that are coming in, even with their high turnover rate and, and vacancy rate. As Greg mentioned in the prior slide, their performance metrics are still very good in terms of answering the phone quickly. It's an issue of burnout, and that, the risk is that eventually their staffing would become so depleted that they can't offer level of service that citizens of Oconomowoc deserve. The next slide here illustrates some differences. Or it should. There we go. So, this shows the employee turnover rate in Oconomowoc Dispatch and at WCC, as well as the utilization of overtime as a percentage of scheduled minimum staffing at both agencies. The employee turnover rate at Oconomowoc, I would make a note that that is probably an artificially high number, and that it's actually lower than that, given the fact that this doesn't include the departures that were just announced. This includes departures over the last three years, two of which were, the, the reason given for them was that there was a concern about job security at the dispatch center. So, that's the, the calculated employee turnover rate, but that's a worthwhile caveat to note. And then, as you can see, as far as overtime utilization goes, WCC's overtime rate is about twice that of Oconomowoc's, and that's what they have been doing to handle the staffing and vacancy issues that result from their turnover and retention issues. So, training and quality assurance, this has to do with the second pillar, which is that professional dispatchers are the optimal solution. Both Oconomowoc and WCC have well-developed employee training programs. Oconomowoc has a very thorough employee training manual. It's systematic program over the course of 12 weeks if somebody's there full-time. It takes them through the different modules of dispatching, call-taking, handling non-emergency work, et cetera. And it's all outlined in, in the document that you have. There are skills tests that they've got to pass to move on. That's definitely a strength. WCC likewise has a very strong formalized new hire training program. They use the International Academy of Emergency Dispatch Model, I-A-E-D, and all of their dispatchers obtain the Emergency Telecommunicator certification as part of their training program. There's this 20 weeks long. They divide it into six-to-eight-week modules. So, if someone is three or four weeks along in training at WCC, it's going to be several weeks before they're able to take calls and several more weeks before they're able to dispatch. Both, you can see a comparison here of some of the features of both Oconomowoc and WCC of their training programs. Both agencies have emergency medical dispatch certification. Both are trained by certified training officers. The real difference, I think, lies in the, the final two rows here, which is that WCC has a formalized ongoing training program. They have a, a training module. They send out skills refreshers every month. They've got it where their dispatchers have to demonstrate ongoing mastery and competence of skills, and they've also got a quality assurance program, which Oconomowoc does not have anything formalized as far as quality assurance, while WCC is going through 100 calls a month, grading them according to a set of criteria, having coaching meetings, et cetera. So, both dispatch centers meet the qualifications of being professional dispatchers, but in terms of the strength of ongoing training and quality assurance, WCC has an edge in this factor. Administrative support and ancillary duties, this is something that we were asked to look at, because what the dispatch center here in Oconomowoc does is not just emergency communications. In fact, the bulk of what they're doing is non-emergency communications, is answering non-emergency calls to the police station. They do a bunch of ancillary and administrative duties that ranges from- They do a bunch of ancillary and administrative duties that ranges from taking calls after hours if somebody's power goes out or they've got a water line break. If somebody comes into the police station after hours in the lobby, they are there to offer them customer service. They're the second set of eyes if a police officer needs to bring someone in for booking or an interview after hours and the police officer would otherwise be the only person there. So they're operating as kind of the hub of the police station and after hours, really in many cases, the hub of the city. If dispatch gets moved to WCC and the department's dispatcher positions are eliminated, those duties still have to be performed. And some of them can't be performed by WCC county dispatchers because those dispatchers are not presently at the police station. There are cities here in county, cities and towns that operate, they let their station go dark after hours and there's nobody physically staffed there, but it became clear to us that that wouldn't be preferable for Oconomowoc. So to perform those functions and make sure that there's still 24/7 in-person customer service to the public, the department would need to have four full-time police clerks in addition to the additional, to the current staffing of police clerks. There's daytime police clerk staffing. It would need to become a 24/7 operation to make sure that they can serve the police department and the public on a 24/7 basis. They wouldn't be doing emergency communications, taking 911 calls or dispatching officers using the CAD system, but they would be doing a lot of other non-emergency and support functions, and those are outlined in the report. Local and institutional knowledge. This was another one that you asked us to look at, and the idea here being that part of the value of dispatchers locally is not just the work that they do, but the familiarity that they have with the city, with its geography, with the police officers. For non-emergency and customer service and the ancillary duties that I mentioned in the prior slide, most of that can be retained by having locally knowledgeable police clerks. If you have 24-hour staffing at the police station of people who know the city, they know the other departments that people need service from, they know the police department, they can provide that level of service in everything except for the work that they're not doing, which would be emergency communications. As far as emergency communications goes, 911 call-taking and dispatch, the ability to locate 911 callers and direct resources during an emergency can be supported by the advanced technology tools like Rapid SOS that WCC has access to. They're able to locate with a high degree of accuracy where 911 calls are coming from, use automatic vehicle locating to determine where the closest responding unit is, how it can most quickly be routed to the scene of the incident. I've sat and watched dispatchers use that system and it's fairly remarkable. The ability to use that kind of technology can essentially cover for the lack of personal, local, geographic familiarity that a WCC dispatcher might have. They are already dispatching fire units, fire and EMS units here to Oconomowoc. If someone calls on their cell phone, they have to identify where they are to know that they're in Oconomowoc and that they should transfer the call over. So they do already have that level of familiarity, but the use of those technology tools can really compensate for the lack of it. They could also be given some training, some ride-alongs, you know, tours and stuff to familiarize them with Oconomowoc so that they're, so that they are more familiar. The thing that can't be replicated here would be the understanding between officers and dispatchers. They operate on their own dedicated radio channel right now. They're on the air all the time, back and forth with each other. There's only five dispatchers here that are full-timers, whereas at WCC, that wouldn't be the case. And the dispatchers over at WCC wouldn't have that level of back-and-forth familiarity with OPD police officers. And Greg, I'll ask you to jump in once more and talk about governance and oversight.
All right, thank you, David. This is a continuation of that framing element, number four, that David essentially started with on the prior slide, and that is discussing things that are related to a net public benefit to public safety overall. And the governance and oversight component is something that you need to consider as you move forward with your decision-making. As you're aware right now, the police department currently has, you know, sole process control and oversight of your own dispatch operation. And clearly, that local control, that terminology is widely used in a lot of areas, but that local control is important, both perceptually and factually. When you go into a consolidated environment, you lose essentially some of that local control. So in the event you were to consolidate with WCC, the police department would not have sole control over the operation any longer. They would actually be one of several members of the WCC's Law Enforcement Protocol Subcommittee. Now, is that an advantage or a disadvantage? Again, that's a determination that you all need to make. But an important point to consider is that when we interviewed, you know, the WCC participants, as we talked about in an earlier slide, the vast majority of them approved of the government, governance system and involvement as it relates. WCC was responsive to their concerns. They believed that the model worked for them despite the fact that they previously had given up local control. So those facts are important for you to know as you move forward with your decision. Next slide, please, David. More issue areas, if you will, surrounding the net public's benefit to public safety. And that is essentially the coordination with other agencies. I'm not going to read these bullet points. I'm going to let you look at these bullet points, and you've also read the report, but this is a slide that I can talk to personally. As I started my career as a police officer at Pasadena Police Department in the mid-1980s, and I can tell you from personal experience that the quicker that I could get a backup unit to me, the quicker that I could get another set of officers, whether it was internally or from our adjoining agency, the better, frankly, that I felt. And fundamentally, we had one dispatch center that could accommodate all of that where we operated. When you have multiple dispatch centers, the coordination with other agencies as to mutual aid, those kinds of things becomes more problematic and eventually becomes delayed just because of the processing that occurs between multiple agencies. So fundamentally, a single dispatch center, regardless of whether it's a consolidated center or whatnot, can muster a variety of regional resources more quickly than multiple dispatch agencies that are serving a regional area. So fundamentally, as it relates to the last bullet point, while moving the dispatch function from OPD to WCC would mean losing some ability to actively monitor radio traffic in some of your regional and adjoining counties. WCC currently does not perform this, but this is one of those questions that you talked about earlier in the evening. This is one of those things you can ask WCC to do as well. So David, next slide for you and Stu to continue.
All right, Stu, will you hop in here?
I sure will. Thank you, David. And now talking about radio utilization, and we look at this for a couple of reasons. And one of the reasons is just to look at the overall activity in the dispatch center and get a feel for that parameter, if you will. And also, yeah, if it's too high of a level, radio utilization, that is to say, there's so much traffic that it becomes a safety issue, we like to flag that, of course. And basically, what we found was that WCC's Area 3 Talk Group, which is the area that the talk group that OPD would be assigned to, we understand anyway, would double, is double that of OPD's talk group, averaging about seven occupied minutes per hour. And at OPD, it's 3.1 minutes per hour, and that's an average number. The traffic on public safety talk groups do fluctuate. And again, the range, for instance, at WCC was anywhere from four minutes per hour, 13 minutes per hour. Now, there's really no standard for that. It's basically the comfort level of the agencies involved. And if we could go to the next slide. So basically, it's at this level, very unlikely to impact officer safety. The fact is that the WCC, actually the Oasis system itself, and they have this capability today, the radios are equipped with a priority alarm feature. It's a red button on the radio, and that ensures that a field unit can always transmit on the talk group during an emergency. So if some other chit-chat going on and something is occurring, officers getting into a fight or some other emergency situation is occurring and they need to break into the talk group, they can do that by hitting that button. And that's handled through the Oasis system as a feature in the system. Also, the dispatchers have the ability to use a secondary talk group in this situation or more in any time there's a critical incident. They can move that activity over to a secondary unit, talk group, that is. And the supervisors have also the ability to backfill staffing for those incidents. So they actually could split that out to another dispatcher if needed. And also, the dedicated dispatchers, instead of a combination call-taker dispatcher situation, if they were only dedicated, you're talking to the officers in the field and the calls coming in and so forth, they're not interfering with that. So importantly, the current agencies that are dispatched by WCC, we asked them very specifically, did not see radio saturation as an issue for their agencies. So this really is not an issue, even though with the level that you see at WCC. Next slide. We looked at different aspects of technology or feasibility of this, and the department would switch to WCC's Integra Hexagon CAD system, and that would require calling applications to communicate with that CAD system on the mobile data terminals. And they would also continue to run, it was our assumption when we put this together, and then we did provide costing for the alternative, but ProPhoenix RMS, Records Management System, would continue to be used by OPD as our assumption on this particular approach and would be independent of WCC. So with that, we would develop, they would have to, you would have to develop and maintain an interface with a Hexagon system, similar to other agencies have done, and they would split the cost of that, I guess. And the other thing to note about that is that there would be additional time spent formatting to ensure the compatibility of the data exported from Hexagon. Next slide. Here we go. And finally, if the dispatch center was consolidated, the 911 radio system could easily be switched over to WCC, and that is to say, the Entrado system, the 911 system that exists today at OPD, would be deactivated. 911 call can then be disrouted to WCC and appear as another set of 911 calls, active in the middle of the others. And the service contract on the Entrado system expires in 2024. We, you know, explain all that in the document itself. The MindShare Radio Console, another item that's under contract, would be deactivated or the service contract expires in 2024, and it could be deactivated. And the radios would need to be reprogrammed to operate on the new talk group structure, which is a pretty minor activity to do, especially with the number of radios that are in the field, there aren't that many. So many of the technologies supported in the non-emergency function performed by dispatch, that is, the things that David was talking about earlier, after hours, for instance, just watching the door and making sure that if there's an interview going on and so forth, that there's some coverage there, would be, would remain unchanged in this approach. And turn it back to David.
Thank you, Stu. So finally, the financial cost impacts of a potential consolidation with WCC. The big picture is that there would be reduced costs over time after some initial transition costs are incurred in the first year. Those annual savings would come from three primary places. One would be a net personnel reduction because there would be five full-time dispatcher positions that would no longer be needed, but four additional full-time police clerks that would be hired back on. So that's a net of one personnel, negative one personnel. The second area that savings would come from is the elimination of maintenance costs, like Stu talked about, with, for the 911 system and the MindShare Radio Console. Those contracts expire in 2024, and those costs would drop off the annual budget thereafter. And the third factor here is the elimination of capital expenditures for replacing the radio console, replacing the 911 phone system, replacing the CAD system as those elements kind of near the end of their useful life, not in the next couple of years, but kind of in the second half of the decade. This is a summary which you'll recognize from the report, and you can see the cost-savings difference here, I'll point it out. In year one, remaining with the current state, we'd estimate at about $608,000. It would be about $118,000 more than that if you guys were to consolidate. Big part of the reason there is this $186,000 one-time brick and mortar fee to WCC. In year two and year three, however, there's a savings of $103,000, $112,000. And over the course of 10 years, we estimate a little over $1.4 million in savings. On an annualized basis, that comes out to almost $125,000 per year. This is a visual of that. The blue line is the current state, and what you could expect year over year over the next 10 years, you notice it goes up slowly. And then, as capital expenditures start to hit in the second half of the decade, it starts to spike and go up a little bit more. Whereas with WCC, the base cost would be lower and the effect of capital replacement would be less because there would be less infrastructure for emergency communications that Oconomowoc would need to replace. So based on all this, our recommendation, as you know from reading the report, is that the department should join WCC for 911 and police dispatch services. And thinking about the four framing elements that Greg introduced at the beginning of the study, the first of those is minimizing delays. Joining WCC would eliminate the excessive transfers, which affect a majority of the 911 phone calls in Oconomowoc. OPD, when they take a 911 call, more than half the time, it's already a transfer from WCC, and that doesn't even include landline calls from within Oconomowoc that then need to be transferred to WCC because they need fire or EMS. Second framing element, professionalization. Like I mentioned, both Oconomowoc and WCC have professional dispatchers. They're well-trained. The ongoing training at WCC is better established, and they've got personnel resources dedicated to that, and they have a quality assurance program as well, which OPD doesn't have. The third framing element being the cost. The cost savings, like I mentioned in the prior slide, for the city over 10 years would annualize to $124,556 per household. That's about $16.42. And as far as the fourth framing element, the net benefit to public safety, there are pros and cons here, as we described, with the staffing issues, with the coordination, with other local public safety agencies. But there are advantages and disadvantages in this area, and none of them are significant enough to outweigh the benefit of being able to get rid of those call transfers that a majority of 911 callers in Oconomowoc are experiencing today. So we've outlined some potential next steps in the report, and there are more than are listed here, and there's a sample schedule of what it might look like over 10 months if you choose to move forward with consolidation. But some of the key elements of that would be beginning to meet regularly with WCC. The Oconomowoc police leadership would begin to meet with them, develop a joint transition plan with them, and this would continue throughout the transition process. Another thing would be to begin attending the Law Enforcement Protocol Subcommittee Meeting. meetings that they have, because if Oconomowoc switches over to WCC, you'd be a part of that subcommittee, and it's going to begin familiarizing yourself with that. Speaking to your current CAD and RMS vendor would be another important thing, because you need to let them know that you're making a transition, and that some of their services will no longer be needed, assuming that you do stick with them for the RMS feature. And then also developing a process change plan to ready the department and ready the community for the switch over, and that would include ride-alongs, tours, familiarizing OPD with WCC's facility, familiarizing their dispatchers with the city of Oconomowoc. And with that, we've covered what we've got in our report, and we'd be happy to take some questions from you.
Well, I thought we'd do councils, let's go around the table, that gives everybody a shot to ask a question, and let's just maybe start with one question, so that you want to ask, we'll start on the left over here with Alderman Kowieski. And if you're not ready to ask a question, just say pass, not a big deal, and we'll just keep going around, so. Thank you very much for the presentation, and it's all up to you, Council, Alderman Kowieski.
I just want to re-clarify that this study was done prior to the information shared to, with us from our HR. So, all of that influx right now between OPD and WCC is not incorporated into any of the information you're providing as a positive or a negative.
That's correct, yeah.
I think that's important to note, the capacity, as you mentioned, in sitting at WCC today, and their commitment to being able and capable of handling our service, and a timeline that is efficient and effective for whatever decision we make, whether it's as backup or as primary, is there, and those challenges are at both institutions moving forward, based on where we're at today. So, I'd take that as a wash in regards to the evaluation of the recommendation, it doesn't put one institution in a better situation to serve us comparatively to another. With that, would you agree?
So is your question, is it a wash, Alderman Kowieski? Can you state the question, please?
Is it a wash? So, with the number of people from OPD that are either leaving or in transition of leaving to where WCC is, with the number of staff that they have in transition and being onboarded, is that a wash, or is that a net positive or negative?
That's a nuanced question that would require a pretty nuanced answer. I think, on one hand, it can be viewed as kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, where the reason that the dispatchers are leaving is because of their concern about job security, and if the council decides, no, we're going to keep dispatch here, you would likely see that issue go away over time, if history is any indicator. On the other hand, it does illustrate the fragility of only having one dispatcher on duty at a time, and that one or two departures has a big impact on the ability to provide service. As far as looking at WCC, it was already apparent that there are turnover and retention issues at WCC, as there are throughout the 911 and emergency communications industry, but those are perhaps looking a little more acute than they were. So, on balance, yes, I'd say it's a wash, but with those caveats.
Alderman Shellpepper.
Yeah, thank you, I really found the report to be incredibly insightful, very thorough, very detailed, really appreciate it. There's no way, on my own, by trying to call one or two people, that I would have been able to look, synthesize the information the way that you guys have done so, so I really appreciate it, I think it was a well worthwhile investment. Can you kind of game out for me what it would look like if OPD's calls were to be transferred to WCC? So, like, how many emergency calls per week is OPD getting again? You know, what's their saturation rate look like? And then how does that fold into WCC? Like, how would that impact their bottom line? Would we still be at a reasonable saturation rate? How would it impact their call volume, overall?
Okay, when we talk about saturation rate, we're talking about the radio.
Right, how much talk is going, so there's two separate, sorry, two separate questions. One is, right, in terms of the saturation rate of radio chatter, the other one is specific to 911 calls received from individuals, I'm sorry, yeah, split those two out, both of them, how does it impact them?
So, WCC already handles more than half the 911 calls that eventually reach OPD, so you'd be looking at an additional about 1,000 calls a year, so maybe three or four more 911 calls per day that would hit WCC as a result, and those would be landline calls from here in Oconomowoc that are currently taken here as the primary PSAP and would head over there.
So the cell phone calls, in terms of the police, if it was a cell phone call for police services, it wouldn't impact WCC's bottom line at all?
Any cell phone calls, yeah, they're already taken over there.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so it would be the landline calls, in order of magnitude about three or four calls per day, based on the data we have. And then as far as radio saturation, the level of saturation on Oconomowoc's channel, and Stu, you might be able to actually help me out more than this, do you want to jump in on this one? I've got an idea, but I think you'll probably have a better idea.
Well, Luke, I think they would move some of their radio traffic off to, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Thanks. I think they would be moving some of their nonessential radio traffic off to a side channel or whatever, but the overall, I mean, even if you added them together, you're still in a margin that is pretty decent as far as overall saturation, it's three minutes and seven, so we're talking 10 minutes anyway, on average, at the maximum, and as an average. And I don't think that would have any issue with, or any change to the level of saturation for dispatching.
And I guess I would also point out that if Oconomowoc police are operating on Area 3, it would be busier, it'd be a lot busier than what they're used to, and it would be some inconvenience, because they wouldn't always be able to transmit right when they want to, there's an exchange going on, but in an emergency situation, when there's a high priority, you know, life and limb is at stake, they'd have the ability, like Stu talked about, to override, take priority, and transmit to the exclusion of others on the channel, so that their emergency would not have to, you know, wait 10 seconds while they're waiting for the air to clear.
Alderman Mulder.
So I was a little dismayed by the priority called processing and dispatching time of only meeting 61% versus the national standard of 90% for both WCC and OPD, and I know you've noted that that can't really be, that's not, I'm wondering if you have more commentary on why that might be, but then, second, and related to that, with the call taker dispatcher model, does that not create, there's a transfer in there, but why do we not consider that transfer a delay, but we do consider the transfer from WCC to OPD to be a delay?
Okay, so with the call taker dispatcher model, the call taker takes the call, but they start filling out the incident in the CAD system while they're on the phone with the caller, I shouldn't make this, do it like this, because this is what it actually looks like. While they're on the phone with the caller, they are filling out the CAD incident, and they're interviewing the caller only once, the phone has ring only once, and once they've got enough information from the caller, they will queue that incident up for dispatch, and the dispatcher on the appropriate area, whether it's Area 3 or wherever, will then assign the correct unit, and that happens very quickly, a matter of like two or three seconds, and they can stay on the phone with the caller and continue filling out that incident while it's already been dispatched and units are responding, and they also have the ability to, and this is important for the 61% metrics, they have the ability, both OPD and WCC, to pre-alert their units before they've even fired out the CAD event to the officers in the field, to hop on the radio and let them know something's coming, and approximately where, to be ready, to get their awareness up. Whereas a 911 call transfer, the person answers the phone, you tell them, you know, where you are, what kind of emergency you're having, and then they recognize, oh, this is not for me, you need a different dispatch center, and you're back to square one, the phone rings again, the person, the second dispatch center answers the phone, asks you a similar set of questions, so there's more of a delay with a 911 call transfer. As far as your first question about the only 61% of incidents being dispatched within 60 seconds, we tried to explain kind of the caveats and why we don't think that's a particularly reliable number in the report, based on just limitations with the data we had available, but as far as like being dismayed about the performance of it, I would point back to the fact that both agencies can pre-alert units, so the data that we have shows when the call was answered, or when the incident was created, and then when it was queued up for dispatch, but before that point, many times they've already gotten on the radio and said, hey, something's coming, get ready, so it's a little better than that.
Thank you. Alderwoman Spiegelberg.
To lose point about the turnover, we can't compare that currently, there's just no way we can compare that currently, our temporary situation that we're in now with the massive situation that WCC's in, and then also, to the talk group situation, if there's a need from an emergency standpoint to go to a different talk group off of 3, that's provided that WCC is staffed well enough to be able to do that. So a couple of comments there, but my question is, two parts really, on page one of the study, it says that in the course of this study, dot, 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 that one of your goals was to hear the input and opinions of stakeholders. So the first part of my question is, who, by definition, or who in your thinking, were and are the stakeholders for this study?
The stakeholders for this study would be the departments that receive service from emergency communication centers, as well as the public who calls and relies on them.
Okay, because in my opinion, the biggest stakeholder that we have are the officers. How many officers did you speak to during the study?
We spoke with the lieutenant, but we did not speak with the field officers.
Okay, I think that was a mistake, our officers are the key stakeholders with our 911 dispatch service and with our dispatch service overall, and I think that was a huge mistake, that none of our officers were spoken to, none whatsoever. How many citizens did you speak to?
Everyone we spoke to was a citizen, you mean, like civilians, non?
Yes, voting citizens of our city.
Everyone at Oconomowoc, the police, police leadership and the dispatchers.
Okay, they're not all necessarily citizens, but I'm talking about just common voting citizens, those people that we represent here, that we as eight individuals represent.
Yeah, we didn't seek out.
Okay, because I really think that our officers and our citizens are the major stakeholders in all of this, but second part to that question, you contacted the agencies who are currently with WCC, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but most of them had no choice to go to WCC but for a huge financial burden to their community. So the second part of my question, though, is, why was there no contact with those who are not with WCC, and that would be Waukesha City, Village and Town of Maguano, City of Muskego, and Village of Elm Grove? To see why they have not made that decision to go to WCC, I think that would be huge information for us to know.
That was not part of our scope, but the reason that we spoke with the agencies that we did was because we wanted to get a sense of what the transition was like, and their take on some of the issues that were raised while we were here, asking, so yeah, we didn't reach out to the agencies that aren't with WCC, that don't have that perspective on the transition.
Okay, I mean, understandable that you're saying that was your scope, but I really think it would have been beneficial for us to know why these other communities at this time are not deciding to go, especially in the grand scheme of this study, and costing us $32,500.
Alderman Ellis.
Hey, thank you very much for the time that you put into this, you said something here on page nine, it says, "The department's contracts for radio console maintenance and 911 phone service will not expire until 2024, meaning that the full cost of savings associated with switching to WCC cannot be realized until then. The center's technology assets are still early in their useful life and will not require capital expenditure for replacement until the second half of this decade." Now, I have a question for you, my first question, it's actually parts A and B, so it's only one question. In your summary cost impact analysis, years 10 and years 20, you stated that they were estimates, how accurate are those estimates?
How, like, with what degree of confidence?
Yeah.
Probably, Stu, would you say, a lot of it's technology related, and you costed out the technology, you want to?
Yeah, rather than give a percentage, I mean, we're using numbers that either were already contracted for, by OPD in some cases, so we had those specific numbers, we applied, depending on the existing contract or not, we used 3% in some cases, for, in most cases, for ongoing, you know, increase per year, and so we were taking real numbers and trying to extrapolate them out. We don't typically go out 20 years, that's for sure.
All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so that answers my question, and the question here is, years 10 and years 20, we can discount those years, and the bottom line here is, we should be really looking at first five years. My calculation is this, and this is.
Is this part B?
This is part B, this is absolutely part B, okay? When I add this up, over three years, our cost savings over three years is $97,213, which over a three-year time period is $22,039. If you want to go ahead and do the math, you can do that. Now, that is not taking into consideration the fact that we've got, still, if I'm reading your paragraph right, and please tell me if I am, that all of our contracts still have to be paid until 2024. Are those numbers in here, in your analysis?
They are.
Okay, so you're taking into consideration that we still have to pay those fees in 2024?
Correct.
Okay, so in essence, then I can, I can come to the conclusion that over the next three years, our savings per year, on the average, is going to be $22,000.
Yes, over the first three years.
Over the first three years, that's correct. Now, that should bring us to year 2024, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. Our contracts, if I recall, prior to us, and this is only my summary, and then I'm done, prior to us being here tonight, was that we were going to relook at this in five years, and the bottom line here is, I really appreciate what you've done, but all this information right here has not persuaded me or swayed me at all, because I think that we're only saving $22,000, guys, we're cutting here, here, this makes no sense. The question here is, how do our citizens feel about this? How does the police feel about this? Thank you.
You had a comment, I saw you shaking your head.
Yeah.
Please comment.
What is certain is that the net personnel reduction of one position would be a real savings, it's, so to say that you can really only look three years out, and that anything beyond three years is bunk, I would take issue with that, because.
Yeah, but you already told me that this was an estimate, and you're assuming a 3% rate over time, you're assuming that, that's like you telling me how the weather is going to be in 10 days, nobody can do that.
Of course not, but.
Then you're answering my question.
Applying an inflation rate is a common practice when you're doing financial projections.
Yeah, I get that, I gather that.
It might not be 3%, it might be 2%, one and a half, 4%.
It could be 5%.
Yeah, that's right, it could, in which case the savings would go up, but the more sure, the more in-hand savings are the personnel reduction and the elimination of the contracts in 2024 for IT service. The ones that are more nebulous, where there's not as great of a level of certainty about it, is the capital replacement costs, and those are not the biggest ones, the biggest one is the personnel reduction, and that's the one that would be in hand, so you can actually look with a pretty high degree of confidence and say, plus or minus 10%, that you would see that personnel savings over the first five years, over the course of 10 years.
Okay, let's move on, remotely, we have Alderman Zapfel. Remotely, we have Alderman Zapfel.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the time and effort you guys have put into this for Matrix Consulting Group. Still am chewing over all this information and digesting it, but just wanted to double check that you said that WCC would not be able to monitor the traffic between Dodge and Jefferson County dispatch, is that correct?
They have the ability to scan their traffic. They don't listen to it on a constant basis the way that Oconomowoc currently does. They've got procedures in place with Dodge and Jefferson if an incident is coming toward Waukesha County, but they're not constantly scanning and listening to what's going on. They have that ability, they just, it's not their practice right now.
Sure, no, I appreciate it. I'm going to listen to everyone else's questions as I digest all this information. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rozak.
So, thank you for coming in tonight. I know you flew in from California, so we appreciate your time. I am going to try to keep this to semi-one question, 1.5?
Are you going to go 1, A, B, C, D?
Oh, 1, A, B, C apart and then a comment.
Give you 1, A.
Okay. I think the most important thing is actually, out of the study is actually not the cost. Most important issue is the framing element number one, which is the crucial minimization of delays in service response. If you look at your, your, your numbers on our percentage, which is 60% of the calls, give or take, for both services are handled within 60% of the time. That's not factoring in that transfer delay, correct? It doesn't factor that in.
That's correct.
So if you actually factor in a transfer delay, which is impossible to really calculate, right, because we don't know from call to call how much it's being transferred, how much there is a delay, that to me is the most important thing about this entire study. And to that safety point, one of the other things that having two PSAPs does is does not allow pre-alerts, correct? So if there's a 911 call that comes in for police, for Conomowoc Police to WCC, WCC can't pre-alert our cops, correct?
That's correct.
That call has to be taken, figured out, is this a police call, is this a fire EMS call, and then transferred back before a pre-alert can happen. If we go to one primary or principal PSAP, when that call comes in whether it's fire, EMS, police, they can immediately pre-alert, correct?
As soon as they have enough information to do so, yeah.
They know, right.
But before they queue up the incident for dispatch.
They, before they even get a dispatch out, they can pre-alert, which right now, given the transfer delays and given this institutional sectionation, that's not even a word, but this institutional segmentation of the dispatch, they can't pre-alert until that call is figured out and it's transferred back. So our police are less safe with the current system we have. Because if a 911 call comes into WCC for our cops, they cannot get pre-alerted. They have to wait for that call to be processed and then transferred. Right now, WCC is taking 56, 60% of our 911 calls already are starting out at WCC and then being transferred here. That is the number one issue, not the cost. The cost to me is the frosting, the icing on the cake. Over, over a period of time, we'll save a lot of money, but that is the safety issue. That's the real primary issue here that we're talking about, that public safety issue. I appreciate your time coming in today. I'm sure it was a, a long haul here. What is that, about a five-hour flight and then you got to present? That's always tough.
Full day.
Yeah, thank you, that's all I have.
Alderman Douglas.
I appreciate you being here. The one thing I was kind of hoping was going to be in the study, to be honest with you, was more information about Menominee Falls. They were one of the last ones that transferred over using Phoenix RMS.
Yeah.
Using a third party in between Integraf and ProPhoenix and how that relates to the RMS system currently. The extra work it has to do for officers. Knowing how ProPhoenix and RMS currently work, being on the road, if I add a, if I add a person to the call with their, on the road, all that information's already in RMS where I can literally plug it in. How does that work between Integraf and the RMS system of ProPhoenix? Does it all have to be hand-entered? Is some of that data coming over? That's not anything that I saw in the study. Is there anything that Menominee Falls happened to address with you in the study of being open with that?
They didn't. Their, if I recall correctly, their officers have the ProPhoenix RMS modules in their squad cars. And so they're able to, they're getting the CAD information from WCC, but they're also able to look up in their RMS the information about, you know, a suspect or a license plate or something like that.
I guess just more of a--
What they didn't, oh, go ahead.
So I guess more of a smooth transition thing. So if I have a burglary complaint or a theft complaint, all that information, location, victim's name, suspect's name, property, anything that I enter on the road, when I go back into the backside in the RMS system, it's all there and I just plug and play basically, using the same WDA and RMS system. How does that transfer work? Does it work well? Is it an issue between Integraf, Hexagon and a third party in between going to the Phoenix RMS system?
Right, I'm going to ask Stu to hop in and give an answer to this one, but I can tell you as far as our conversation with Menominee Falls, that they have to, they have to basically export data from Hexagon, clean it so it's ready for their RMS, so it doesn't, for their ProPhoenix RMS, so that it doesn't create data replication issues and stuff like that. Stu, can you speak to his question about what it looks like in the field in terms of the integration between the two?
No, no, really, it's, it's not cleaned, just because you're dealing with two different companies. And the fact is, we did cost out the option to go with their RMS system as well, but even that is a company too. So I really haven't done, you know, we haven't really, and it isn't part of the scope as far as designing the system and taking a look at the actual in-the-field look of it, but I suspect that it would probably take some adjusting.
But Stu, the ProPhoenix, the interface between ProPhoenix and Hexagon goes both ways. So a CAD incident can, can pull from the ProPhoenix RMS and look at like a site history, for example?
Well, the, the ProPhoenix module would remain at the very worst case so that, that the mobile unit would be able to take a look at what's on the RMS system. We did have that conversation. And I'm not really sure about the functionality as far as the interface is concerned to, to the ProPhoenix versus Hexagon system. I just don't know what would appear. Typically, over time, you will get that information in the system, in the Hexagon side, you know, history of location and person information and so forth. And I've seen agencies actually hand-enter a lot of information just to have some basics in their, in their frequent flyer locations, if you will.
We've had multiple questions from Alderman. Let's leave it open, wide open if you have further questions. Alderman Shellpepper.
Were you able to game out kind of the, the ratio of dispatcher duties versus like police clerical duties that are currently taking place at the Oconomowoc Dispatch Center? I mean, the ratio as terms of how, how much of it is actually dispatching, taking emergency calls, how much of it is, you know, monitoring a surveillance camera, filling out warrant information, some of these ancillary duties? Do you have any idea?
Sure.
Can you put a beat on that?
Not precisely, but the non-emergency stuff is the majority. I'd say it's the vast majority, actually, given the--
You can speak into the microphone, please.
Yeah, sorry. I would say the non-emergency work is significant majority of what they do. For example, the, if you look at the CAD event database that we got from Oconomowoc Dispatch, there were, I think, 17,000 or something CAD events over the course of, of the period that we got. But less than half of those were generated as a result of a phone call, any phone call, let alone a 911 phone call. So was it 7, 8%, something like that, of the CAD events in the system come from 911 calls, another 40 or so percent from non-emergency calls, and then the rest from staff coming and walking in or an off, not staff walking in, customers walking in or an officer-initiated thing. Yeah, so it, it's primarily non-emergency, but I can't put a precise figure on it.
And just going back to your pool of interviewees in terms of representatives of the customer agencies that are currently part of WCC, who were those? I mean, you don't have to name their names, but what positions did they generally have? I mean--
They, they were the person who was the liaison with WCC. So whether that was a chief or a lieutenant or the--
Would you say that those individuals are leaders and representatives of the patrol officers of the stations that they work for?
The sworn ones, which was probably 10 or 11 out of the 12.
Thank you.
Alderman Ellis.
I do remember you stating that if we were to go over to WCC, that there would be a loss of local control. But did I also hear you say by, that the officer's safety, there was no impact?
On?
As far as the officer's safety is concerned?
Yes.
Oh, you did say that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
To John's point about servicing Dodge and Jefferson County, unless we have an agreement with WCC, we are actually making our neighbors less safe. To Alderman Rozak's point about the pre-alert, I have spoken to Chief Fister about that, and I know he, he can address that next week as far as stating that this is really not an issue for us at this time. I really have a concern with the, WCC's Area 3 Talk Group. On page 44 of your study, 8.2, it says, "WCC's Area 3 Talk Group is notably busier than OPD's dedicated talk group." My question is, can we take a chance on that? And that doesn't even include, I believe, Village of Pewalki and Menominee Falls at that time. Is that correct? Because Village of Pewalki is actually in on our talk group and with WCC, and I didn't see them referenced anywhere.
Say that again about Village of Pewalki?
Village of Pewalki and Menominee Falls, that would probably add eight to nine additional squads. And I guess one of the other questions I would have is, how, what would the average number of people be in a channel? I think that would be an interesting statistic for us to see.
Alderman Spiegelberg, I have those numbers if you want them.
Do you?
I do. I reached out to the operations manager of WCC specifically about that question.
Okay.
So Area 1 and 2 that are currently patched is New Berlin and the city of Brookfield.
Okay.
So that has 20 patrol officers, taking out detectives and administration that's not currently supervised in the road. So like your sergeants would be included in that.
Okay.
Area 3 and Area 5, that patch is the Lakes Community, which Village of Pewalki's always been part of. They added Menominee Falls, which is Area 5. That's 23. Area 4, which is the Sheriff's Department, and smaller part-time agencies, that is 29.
Okay.
And it's always been kind of its own channel at about 29 to 30.
Okay, and who did you talk to within Area 3?
That was Chris Becker, the operations manager that sent the staffing email.
Did you talk specifically to any of the police chiefs from any of those areas as far as issues that they might have with that?
No, I just learned about this recently.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Kavieski.
So there's been some discussion in regards to Jefferson, Dodge County. We're on the edge of the county. There, while we lose complete local control, we don't lose local influence over the process if we were to transfer to WCC, correct? So they're able to customize to our local requests to the best of their serviceability and enhancement of service.
Yeah, they can--
Bring those on--
Customize like the type of response that they dispatch for different types of incidents that come in, yeah.
So the comment--
And each agency gets the opportunity to set those, those specs in place.
So they can bring monitoring those surrounding communities in-house.
That wouldn't necessarily be part of it.
Potentially?
Potentially, yes. That's something that you'd have to talk with them about.
Though we'd have to talk to them. One thing for sure is with the town of Oconomowoc being on WCC, they would be on the same system.
Yeah, almost certainly.
Which is our--
Right here.
Right here. That's who we, I would imagine rely on most for, for backup would be the town. So I think that's, that weighs heavy, having those on the same system in a weight-heavy previously before they switched to WCC in my evaluation. So I think it's noteworthy.
Alderman Shellpepper.
What's, what would be like the national, or I don't, because I don't know if you could get to the state, but I mean, what, what's the typical number of officers that are on a talk group or, or are on a certain frequency? I mean, do you have any idea? I mean, because I feel like, I, I'm not sure, but it seems like maybe we're at a pretty, Oconomowoc right now could be at a pretty low level.
It is, yeah.
I don't know. And so do you think WCC, the level that they currently have, I mean, how does that compare to what, what would be commonplace across the country or, or the state? Any idea?
Stu, can you speak to that one?
There, there is no average like that or no number, but what we did do was ask the existing agencies if they felt it was going to be an issue. And secondly, about the level of, number of units that are on the, in the field. And we have agencies that have 40 or so, and sometimes they split them into zones and things like that, but I generally see 25, 30 units. That's not an issue on, on, on one channel. More importantly, it's how much traffic there actually is rather than the number of units and the kind of traffic. So, you know, fire is different than, than police as far as the length of time, or medical is definitely different. And so what we look at is a number of, of seconds on, on a particular channel. We did that with the overall being, you know, the amount of time on the channel. And it's, it's adequate and handled without any problem. And the agencies again said there wa, there wasn't an issue for them.
Alderman Mulder.
Well, I, I think you mentioned this before. I just want to make sure that, that I'm clear as I'm looking at your charts. It, it, on average, we're looking at, if we were to join Talk Group 3, we're probably looking at about 10 minutes of airtime per hour. So I would say, I would categorize that as low usage. I don't know, there's, you want to comment, Chris? And even at peaks, we're probably looking at 20 minutes of talk time. So I mean, we're still looking at, but I don't know if that's, that's, that's 40 minutes of radio silence. I don't know if that's a meaningful or not, but it doesn't seem like that's a very high saturation.
Well, you, you want to have majority radio silence.
Agree, but that, but, but even getting to 20 minutes of talk time doesn't seem like that's, or does that, does that become concerning, I guess? That's my question, is that a concerning number?
It becomes concerning if there's not a way to get around it in an emergency. But the Oasis radio system does offer that feature. So, yeah, it's, it's not nothing. It's, the 10 minutes, 15 minutes I'd consider moderate, 20 minutes getting pretty busy. And speaking to the other agencies that are on Area 3 currently, they said, yeah, the air gets busy, no, it's not a problem for officer's safety, and we haven't had an instance where it has been.
Alderman Zapfel, you're remote, do you have any questions?
At this point, I have no further questions, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Kavieski.
I have an A and B, I guess. So Alderman Ellis, yeah, you set, you set the tone with A and B, so that's on you. And, and one of your, your points was cost and cost savings. One of the largest initial costs is going to be the one-time WCC fee buy-in. That won't go down, that we know for sure. So if every year we wait, that cost goes up. So as the evaluation builds out, if we were to wait for a transfer, if a transfer were to occur to WCC, that number will be inflated based on the value of our community at the time of the transfer. So that's a known. The cost is part of the equation, but to echo Alderman Rozak's point, it is not solely about cost, it is about public safety. And I believe that was your, your direction and how you came up with the overall recommendation that you did in the study. It wasn't, you're going to save some money, so you should do this. It is in the best interest of public safety and the dispatch of the public safety service departments, which is PD, EMS and FIRE, to be as part of a unified dispatch mechanism. Is that a fair statement?
That, that's the factor that weighs most heavily, yeah.
So with, with that clearly stated, having public safety as the predominant weighted factor in this study, I, I don't see, I haven't been provided with any information that would sway me not from supporting the conclusions that you came up with.
Do we have any more questions from council? Alderman Spiegelberg.
Page 14 of the study, I was, it was-- Page 14 of the study, I was, it was very nice to see, and I quote, "Both centers exceed recognized standards for 911 call-taking speed." On page 62, per Matrix, they say that any transition to WCC is not necessarily urgent, that the level of dispatch service provided by OPD is high. We are safe in our community. So I would just like to point out that this is not an urgent matter. People aren't falling over dead in the streets because we have a lack of response time. We are a very safe community, and I trust in our chief and our captain to reassure us of that in a couple weeks when they get a chance to get up and speak as well.
Alderman Rozak.
Why don't we read the rest of 4.2? The timing of this transition is not necessarily urgent, with the exception of the call transfer issue. That, that's, again, one of the key framing elements. Number one, is eliminating that transfer and that safety. So read the whole section, and it talks about, sure, that timing is, there's not absolute timing urgent there, with the exception of the call transfer issue. I mean, read the rest of it. And that's, that's the point I've been making since this debate started three years ago. Look, I think what we got with the study was money well spent. I appreciate your time. It's something we didn't get last time, which is a third-party fair and impartial, I think, look at this, based on a, I think, a very robust RFP that some of us spent a lot of time putting together. And, you know, we got a lot to look at, there's 123 pages, so I have no, no other questions.
Alderman Spiegelberg.
I just want to go back to my thought. If it was urgent that we move, they would have said, we need to do this now. For our public safety, we need to do this now. I'm assure, I'm sure that they would have said that, and they didn't.
So any other further questions for Matrix, for David? So we have a couple weeks, a lot more questions, and I'll come back to you in just a second, David. What I would like to have all council members, if you have questions moving forward regarding the report or questions that we want to bring back to Matrix for clarification, please email those directly to our city administrator, Mr. Fry. We'll, we'll bring all that information together, get the answers for you to the best of our ability, but then we'll share that information to all council members, so everything's done in an open and transparent manner. David?
I can hold it.
You can hold it?
Yeah.
Okay, any last questions?
Last one.
Sure, go ahead.
And this is something that you talked about, and I'm just asking for clarity. So when they were talking about bringing the information in, you said they had to clean it? Between the different systems? Can you just, what is cleaning it?
Formatting it, making sure that it's in the format that will fit with the architecture of ProPhoenix RMS.
So there's not a software out there that does that automatically, or? And I'm only asking because I don't know.
No, the, the interface exports it, but it's a kind of a time-intensive process to maintain those files. So Menominee Falls has some staff time that's dedicated to doing that.
So if you looked at our community on this topic, how many hours or minutes per day would we have to pay somebody to clean it? A rough estimate?
If you already have 24/7 police clerks at, at the station that aren't doing emergency communications, that would be part of their duties.
No, I understand that, but is this something that takes two minutes to do a day?
Oh.
Five hours a day? I'm trying to get, I probably put a scope of the value.
It's about half a position, if I recall correctly.
It's about half of a position?
From my conversation with Menominee, yeah.
To clean it?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir. Any other question? I'm sorry, do you want to...
No, no, that was it, I just...
Great. Okay, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can, can I just make a recommendation that anything that was submitted to us as far as, like, these emails would be available for the public to read and see as well?
They're public record.
They're public record, anyway. Sure.
Are they, are they on the website for any public individuals to see?
They're usually, you have to request, you have to make a request for the public record. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the questions that we have moving forward, you would like to be able to have the, have the correspondent answers put in a public form?
No.
That's easily accessible?
No, I'm talking about the emails that we got from the chief today and from WCC.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are public record.
That was staffing, that was on staffing, not the Matrix.
Right, right, but I mean, I think those should be available for the public to see and read as soon as possible.
Public record.
Yeah, we'll make sure that they're available. Thank you. Like to entertain a motion to adjourn?
Well, before we adjourn, can we get a copy of the actual PowerPoint presentation as well?
Sure.
Okay.
I can email it to you.
You bet. Yeah, and if you think of anything later today, just please let Mark know. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Well, there has to be a motion.
So moved.
First.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.